Welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee Number Four for 2022. We have all councillors in attendance this morning. Councillor Kunzaman, would you like to lead us in acknowledgement of country?
Thank you Chair. Today, this committee recognises the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. We support their right to democratic representation and social inclusion. If City Council acknowledges the ongoing challenges faced by Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people, and this committee supports their inclusion and participation in community cultural arts and sports activities.
Thank you councillor. Do any members of the committee have any declarations of interest? Moving on to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. The recommendation here is that the minutes of the CCAS held on the 7th of April be confirmed. I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Any discussion or corrections? No, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Item number two this morning is the Indigenous Accord 2022 to 2025 Milestone Report, April 2022. I'd like to call People and Culture Manager, Ms Talia Lovelene, to the lectern.
Good morning all. Talia Lovelene, Manager, People and Culture.
Thank you for your attendance this morning. I think it's really important to show the commitment from the People and Culture branch and their place or their role in delivering on some of these key outcomes of the Indigenous Accord. Would you like to give us a couple of the highlights that we've seen from People and Culture since our last update?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Proudly, on the 17th of March, we launched the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Employee Working Group. We've got a group of seven staff who are deeply excited and committed to, I guess, furthering what we can do to improve cultural safety within the employment, employees of the council workforce. We have had two meetings so far and the ideas are endless and we're trying to rein in what we can, you know, fix in the short term, the medium term and the long term. At the moment, the group is focused on reviewing, in the Indigenous Accord, there's some pretty big requirements around cultural awareness and cultural capability. We're currently reviewing, we've got 22 people reviewing the IATSS online cultural capability training and that's one of the options that we might progress down. But there's also things that the group is looking at in terms of how to promote that we have this employee working group now so that we can get more Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander employees to actually join the group. We've only got seven at the moment and we know there are more out there and we really want to encourage them to join. So we're having ideas on how to get that membership up in the group. We're also looking at what we can do to support NADOC Week coming up and Cultural Days of Significance over any calendar year and what employees can be doing to promote learning and support activities across the organisation. So a lot of work in a couple of months, which we're really proud of.
Yeah, I love that and I think that it's such an important commitment that you've made and just highlighting that these things take time. I mean, when we first set the key milestones for the Indigenous Accord, I guess, we as a collective and if I may speak on behalf of the committee, were very ambitious in some of those targets. And I guess there was an assumption particularly from myself that things would happen a little bit quicker than they are. But when you start unpacking them and the amount of work that needs to go into them, I guess you realise that, you know, it takes a lot to shift the dial a little bit further, so.
And to do it in a culturally safe way.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, yeah, you can't just, you know, rip everything up that we've done in the past to move on. So I'm really pleased to hear that People and Culture are committed to helping kick this along. So thank you. Any other questions for Ms Lovelene? Thank you ma'am.
If I may Chair, when we first approved this, I think one of our first or second council meetings, there were a couple of things that the organisation highlighted that were the most important. One of those is 3.3.1, which is Develop and Implement a Work Experience Training and internship Programme for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. And I know it says there's no activity this reporting period. Are you able to provide some type of update?
Yes.
Now we're two years on, where we're at with this?
I believe that we're, well, the advice that I've been given is to, we're waiting for the Traditional Owner Reference Group. That's an important step so that we don't just go out and get it wrong, basically. We need to be consulting with that group, so we're waiting for that group.
And when will that group consider this?
I don't actually know that one myself, sorry ma'am. Oh, sorry Derek.
You probably have to go to the lectern.
Mr Kinsale.
Good morning everyone. My name's Derek Kinsale. I'm Indigenous Community Development Officer within the Community Development Team. Apprenticeships, traineeships, they're an important part of council. So just recently, NIAA sent out.
So IA.
National Indigenous Agency, Authority, IE, its funding programme. So we were looking at that, but as part of what we do, it overlaps with other programmes within community. So it doesn't put us in that space. So what we are continuing to look at is any funding that may come out where we are able to support any opportunity for traineeships and apprenticeships. But at the same time, I'm talking with school CECs, which is Community Education Councillors, to look at what they are doing within school or work experience that some of their young people may be interested in. Because over previous years, schools have approached us and say, okay, how can we get young people into work experience? So at the moment, it's been a hit and miss with some of the schools based on COVID. So some are actively and then some are saying, okay, yep, and then meetings get cancelled. But we're looking at now, talking with those schools to say, okay, what are some of the aspirations of young people in those and then we'll bring them back to our working group, but also to People and Culture and say, okay, these are some of the young aspirations young people would like to do with work experience within council and then work on that process. So our aim is, yes, we are waiting for other things to happen, but we're not stopping and just hoping. So we are looking, continuing to do that process.
Mr Kinsale, is it possible that we could work with service providers, already Indigenous and Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander service providers who are, you know, employment agencies?
Yep.
Is it possible for us to partner with them to progress this?
Well, we were in the process of working with your town, but they just recently lost their contract for Ipswich, which has now put them in limbo until the new contractor comes in Ipswich, which is working with young people. So definitely when they come on board, we will be working with them to see, okay, what is the thing? But we do look at NORTEC, which also have lost their contract for the area. Salvation Army, we're working with Salvation Army to say, okay, what do you have? So at the moment, what we do is we send out all jobs that come through our area to them and get them to apply for those roles. But we also advocate where we can to make sure that if they have any ideas for us on what is needed for their clientele, then we'll definitely look at all of those. So definitely we're not shying away from employing more Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people within the service. It's just we're trying to take every opportunity we can, but also talk to all of those services and say, look, you know, it's a great organisation to work for, but we just need to be able to say, okay, what skills do people have? Because the jobs we have at the moment, a lot of the jobs that we send out are specific jobs and some of the people on their books don't have the skill sets for those. So it's working with them, the same thing. But we are, like I said, it's looking at that long-term thing, which is traineeships, skill-based traineeships, apprenticeships and, you know, work experience.
Thank you, Mr Kinsale. May I ask, and you know what, this one, 1.4.1, which is the development of an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander War Memorial.
Yep.
And I think we'll have to move some type of amendment because we know that putting Queens Park is culturally inappropriate. As we know from working with the state and the federal government's Indigenous War Memorial Committees. We've had briefings from them. And the fact that Aboriginal Torres Strait Islanders have, veterans have fought very hard to make sure that their memorials are with all other veteran memorials. And then so we probably need to change that. And I see that there's a development of a project brief. When will councils be briefed on this? That says here, the development of the project brief for the conceptual design is underway and will be presented at a future council briefing for consideration.
Yeah, so that's, that's in the process now. So we would say a conceptual design and, well, it takes about eight weeks, my understanding, is from that to get a thing. And then once we get that conceptual design, then we'll do a briefing within that period. So we're hoping within, well, it shouldn't be too long.
How have your discussions gone with the state and the federal agencies in regards to grants and things like that? Because they seem to indicate a willingness to fund this.
Yes, I spoke with Bernice Mitchell from National Indigenous and so they have got the grants out at the moment. So we are continuing to talk with that process, looking at that grant.
Okay, and we'll get some type of conceptual design in two months, eight weeks or something like that?
We hope, yeah.
Thank you, Miss.
Just depending on, I guess, all these other elements around COVID and stuff like that. But we hope to have it very soon.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
The recommendation here is that the Indigenous Accord 2020 to 2025 Milestone Report, April 2022, be received and the contents noted. I'm happy to move that if I've got a second there out there. Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Now I open that up for any discussion. Thank you ma'am.
If I may Chair, I know I raise this every time, but 3.3.1, I think, is really imperative. If people have a job, makes such a difference to their life. I guess I'll get the fact that we're nearly two years into this accord and it doesn't seem to be much progress from what I can see. I realise that there's COVID and there's work going on, but I guess I'm just asking if we could have, be a little more targeted or if we can work offline with the organisation to make sure that we do actually achieve that particular, to have people come in and work experience, traineeships or internships for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander community.
Yep, I note that and I'll work with the relevant GM and keep you updated intermittently. I think it is worth noting that, I guess, this organisation's maturity in this space hasn't really been up there. And a really important factor is any change that we roll out needs to be culturally safe. So there's probably a few things that we need to kick off to get the entire organisation on board before we start making those, you know, specific moves, you know, and really focusing on these employment targets. I think there's broader work to be done before honing on, honing in on a few of these things. And I absolutely agree that it's important that we have those pathways and those opportunities for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in this organisation. But how wonderful it would be if they come into an organisation that's ready to receive them with open arms and help them and understand where they're coming from. I think that's some really important work and some really swift work. I mean, looking at this report, People and Culture have done an amazing job since our last report, trying to build that capacity and capability as well. So I commend them for that and thanks Derek for always flying the flag as well. It's awesome. Councillor Johnning, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to add that I think with our draft economic development strategy and building that, then we can actually kind of cross-pollinate with Derek's team too. And they seem to be kind of standing alone, but they've got a few extra levels to get through. Whereas we're building data as well now with this draft strategy and we could work together and amalgamate a little bit more because it's not, these issues aren't simply about Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people either. So I think that it's a great opportunity to work together.
Yeah, to highlight those opportunities, you know, in the new economic development strategies.
Absolutely.
A great idea, a great idea. Any further discussion? We'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number three, the Customer Experience Strategy, An Immediate Action Plan Report, March 2022. I'd like to call the relevant managers to the lectern. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning Chair, good morning ma'am, good morning councillors. Samantha Chandler, Libraries and Customer Services Manager.
Okay, let's just start with a high-level overview and update of the Customer Experience Strategy. This is something that's really important to this committee and this council. We're always wondering how we can improve our customer service, how we can improve that front face of the business to ensure that our community is getting the service they need.
So the Customer Experience Strategy was endorsed in October last year, October 2021. And since then, we've progressed the Immediate Action Plan and undertaken comprehensive planning and preparation for the delivery of the CX Programme of Work, so the Customer Experience Programme of Work. So that includes using current resource, but it also includes resourcing for project planning for the corporate budget process for 2023. So the Programme of Work is due to start on the 1st of July this year and we're well-prepared for implementation at this stage. It's important to note that the implementation of the Immediate Action Plan and the CX Programme of Work includes changes to systems, processes and a shift in culture that's critical to the success of the strategy.
Thank you. I've got a specific question about some of the risks and, I guess, opportunities that we have with the SES programme. I mean, that's a programme that this organisation relies heavily on to interface with our residents, isn't it?
It is. I'm going to hand you over to our project lead to give you a bit more detail about the actual report.
Thank you.
Good morning Chair, Mayor and Councillors. My name's Anne Cahill, on the Customer Experience Project Lead.
Thanks, Miss Cahill. So yeah, just picking up on that question around some of the risks and opportunities that we have with the SES platform.
Yeah, the SES platform has been used by individual branches and sections and never planned as a single experience for the customer. And we've been working through that. It's identified as an issue. As we've started the implementation, the specific issues have come up. You know, we understand what they are and we're working on that now with ICT and other areas of the business. One of the actions we have taken is set up a group for the staff who support the SES platform to work together, to increase their skills and get some cross-skilling because some areas are much stronger out of than others.
What were some of those opportunities that you identified? What kind of upgrades can we do to SES to improve that platform and how it serves our residents?
There's basically two things to consider when thinking about SES. One is that we don't use it the same way. So, for example, some customers receive a closure to say that the request is completed.
Which is one of the biggest bugbears.
Yes, and other customers don't. And we've found out why that's happened and we're working to make that streamlined. It sounds simple, but there's obviously a system change. But the second part of this story is that there's a culture change, as Sam alluded to, and a process change in the organisation. So this is about agreeing on what that is moving forward and then working with teams in the organisation to move to that sort of model. For example, some areas who deal with customers don't have the confidence to deal with customers and talk to them even through email. So we need to support those so that they come up to the standard. And when we're ready to do that, you know, make it the same right across the organisation. So it's about, I say, 20% of it is about the system. 80% of it is about empowering the people, changing the culture and changing our processes.
Yep. So with the upgrade to SES, the customer will be able to track their requests rather than it just being closed and then getting that.
Yes, the main things that we've identified that we can do in the system is firstly, when they lodge a request, it will be able to tell them what it's for. At the moment, it just says you have lodged a request. So if a customer has more than one request in the system, they might not know which, you know, what which one is. So it will tell them what it is. Longer term, we hope to tell them the service delivery, the expectation of when the service will be delivered and it's capable of doing that. And then they'll be able to track it, they'll be giving statuses and most importantly, given the closure. The first change that we're going to make will be relatively soon. And when the customers that do receive a closure will receive the opportunity to give feedback. So we will receive that feedback. The reason we're doing it first is because we want some benchmarking. The reason we're doing it first is because we want some benchmarking numbers on where we are so that we know when the other changes are made that we've had an effect.
It sounds like a small thing, but I think it's music to the ears of this committee, you know, just improving that little process will mean a lot for some of the requests that we as councillors get as well. Any other questions? Mayor?
If I may, Chair, first of all, thank you very much for an honest baseline. Really appreciate that we know we're on a journey here. And I think one thing as we go through, as we implement this customer service and customer experience strategy, is we hear the term net promoter score quite a bit. Ms. Cahill, do you mind explaining what net promoter score is?
Yeah, I will. Firstly, can I just say that it's the, one of the three measures that we identified in the strategy to identify the overall customer experience. So while there'll be benchmarking when a customer has a service about that particular service, this is about measuring our experience overall. The net promoter score does not measure customer service, it measures the customer's experience and their loyalty and their perception of the organisation. So also important to consider that this isn't just when they call the contact centre, this is their passive interactions. So when they use the internet, when they visit a park, when they walk down the street, whether they trip on the curb or not and things like that. So this is their whole experience with council. And in the past, we've treated people as an individual interaction where this is moving us to thinking about everything that they experience in council. The customers ask one question, and it's how likely that you would speak highly about Ipswich City Council to a friend or colleague. Now, I looked down to read that because it's important that every organisation says it the same way so that we can compare across other organisations. They give a scale of zero to 10, and the detractors are the people that measure zero to six, and the promoters are the people that measure nine or 10. The promoters are minus for the detractors and an overall score is given. So we've completed the benchmarking for that, one and a half thousand customers over two channels, and our initial benchmarking has resulted.
Thank you. And may I ask, Ms. Cahill, when you look at the November, I'm looking at the November survey results of minus 18 on page 40.
Yes.
I find it really interesting then going across to the, is it the CSBA?
Yes.
Which is, which ranks council, and to see that we rank between six and 16 out of 50 councils when it comes to?
Customer service.
Customer service. I find it quite interesting, and I think when you look at customer service, you look at, let's just say you ring a telco, you might get, Telstra may help you, but it was such a frustrating experience that you give them a high score, they did the job that you asked, but a low score when it comes to customer experience. Would that be what we're trying to?
Yes, so what we're trying to understand is the difference between customer service and the customer experience. So the CSBA work has been benchmarking our customer service since 2019, and we have tracked well and we've improved. But this is about transactions, I want to pay my rates, I want to call a contact centre, I want to do this. This isn't about complex issues that the customers end up coming into the organisation, and that's when we're falling down. We're falling down with complexity and when we have to interact with the customer, sometimes over multiple times with the same issue.
Thank you. I think that's a good delineation to make between servicing our customers and also their experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The recommendation here that the quarterly report concerning council's customer experience strategy, an immediate action plan be received and the contents noted. Happy to move? I've got a second there. Thank you, councillor Johnick. I'll open that up for any discussion. Mayor?
If I may, Chair, if I go to the immediate action plan, which is attachment three, page 67 of 98. The very first one is implement a mobile app to provide channel for improved incident reporting, customer feedback. I'm quite keen to understand this better because we already have multiple apps in our council, and there's also Snap Send Solve. So I guess I'm keen to have a better understanding of what that is. Is that something new? Is it something that's more encompassing? There's the, I think, My Ipswich app, there's a few things that we've got on the go. So I'm very keen not to, do you forget, I see other councils will have just a one app for the entire council. I'm very open to that idea, but probably not to create a new one.
I agree. And I guess it's something that we'll be fleshing out over the course of the next 12 months. What are the implications of ICT's involvement in the customer experience strategy and its delivery? What are the implications of iVolve knowing the complexities we have around that? And what are the implications on the customer experience strategy as well? They're so closely linked, but, you know, we're aware that that's an issue, so we'll just keep an eye on that as we move forward.
Chair, I point out, they do say that it's going to happen in a three to six month timeframe, so I think it'll happen before iVolve. And so I think it's very important that the elected body are consulted on this.
Yeah, I think maybe a few of these timelines might need to be revisited based on what's happening with the iVolve. You know, and try, as you said, not to duplicate anything across the process, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be overlap, particularly if we're implementing new systems and processes with the implementation of iVolve and when that is, and compared to where we are with our customer experience strategy. I really like that we're going to be making some improvements to SES. Sounds basic, but it'll mean a lot for lots of the feedback that we get. And, you know, councillor Ireland will be very pleased to hear that those improvements were being made as well.
Thank you, Chair. Chair may also mention, with the immediate action plan under Communicate, action one is increase customer visibility on progress and status of service requests raised in SES and My Ipswich, which obviously was one of the apps. And I think that dovetails on what you were saying, that's really important. We see in the US, I think they call it 311, they have 911 for emergencies, 311. They've been doing it for over a decade where there's that feedback loop where people can see where they've reported a pothole, they can see that's going to get filled next week or something. So I think that's something that is happens globally, it'd be really great for us to get onto that as well.
Yeah, I agree. Lots of red in those tables we were given, let's hope we can make some progress on that. With no further discussion, I'll take that one to the vote, all those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the final item on today's agenda, the Georgie Conway Laikart Community Swim Centre Stakeholder Engagement Report. Would any members of committee like to speak to the relevant council officer? Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Good morning, Chair and councillors. Susan Scott, I'm the Stakeholder Engagement Manager, and this is my first report.
We'll be gentle on you, Ms. Scott. Thank you for this report. It was quite thorough and I really appreciated reading and there. And can I just confirm that the consultation process was, I can see there were interviews, a survey on Shape Your Ipswich and hard copy surveys and telephone interview?
There was one interview with the lesee, the face-to-face interview, and then the remainder of the consultation was the survey that we ran on Shape Your Ipswich. And then we realised that some of the pool users had difficulty with computer literacy, and so we took the hard copies down there and promoted it as being available at reception desks there, and we got a very good response.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Thank you for that.
That's it, thank you very much, no further questions. The recommendation here is that the report be received and the contents noted. Happy to move that for the opportunity of discussion if I've got someone to second that. Thank you, Mayor. So opening up for discussion, based on the report that we've been given and this particular agenda item, I think we need to thank Stakeholder Engagement for what was a really lovely and honest approach to surveying the users of the pool. Made a concerted effort to actually go out there. Councillor Doyle and I gave feedback along the way, and at every point we were listened to. Our community felt like they were listened to. And it sounds like a small gesture, but printing out surveys and taking them out meant a lot to some of the pool users out there as well. Yeah, I think that we, when it comes to this report, you know, it speaks to the communities of need in there, the special needs communities that use the pool, people that use this as a therapy pool, its access for disability. I think that, you know, all really good highlights to showcase the kinds of users that are down at the pool. But when it comes to addressing, you know, obviously the subsequent issue that we were looking to resolve here is, you know, did the community want us to heat the pool or not? I mean, we called for this report so that we could get a firm handle of the community sentiment before this council rushed into making any decisions. So to my mind, there is a subsequent decision that this council will have to make categorically. Are we going to heat the pool further or are we going to stick to the status quo? And I think that it would be beneficial for this committee to potentially refresh themselves on the current infrastructure capacity, what we're able to do there. And when at council ordinary this month, I'd like to discuss the implications of this report further with the whole of the council. So, you know, and potentially foreshadowing a report into what it would actually cost to heat the pool further. There is genuine community appetite to do that. Mr. Alderton's not here today, but, you know, there is genuine community appetite, and we saw that throughout the survey, and we've seen some of those special needs communities that really rely on this pool, some people that were using it when it was warmer and stopped using it. You know, it's a really important facility. And I know that councillor Doyle shares my thoughts on this. So I think that, you know, while today we're just adopting this report, we see the evidence in front of us. But to my mind, again, we need to make a decision about whether we're going to heat it or not. So I'd like to have that discussion, and I'm just letting the committee know that I'd like to have that discussion at council ordinary. Mayor?
May I ask for Mr. Madigan to come to the lectern? I think it'd be good to have a discussion on?
The current infrastructure requirements and?
And future infrastructure that's going to be built there as well.
Yep.
Good morning, James Hilliard, Works and Field Services Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Hilliard, under this lease, the, the, was it the name of the, the lesson? Ah, sorry, the steering pool, have a contractual obligation to build an indoor pool, is that correct?
Correct.
And when, what's the timeframe for that?
I have the proposal, it's just come through yesterday. So it's a proposal, the pool construction is proposed to start at the end of this month, at a cost of $320,000, which will be fully paid for by the lesee. It's a fit-for-purpose indoor heated pool, 12 metres by seven metres. It's based on a pool that they've previously constructed, constructed at the Pimperma retirement home. So it's completely fit for purpose for aqua aerobics and?
Does it have disability access? Will the pool have a ramp?
It'll have, it's benched along each length, 12 metre length for easy access for people. It's for learn to swim and for the aqua aerobics or activities for aged people.
Oh, that's a really amazing development.
Yeah, so it's fully enclosed, fit-for-purpose pool that we can heat to the required temperature.
Are you able to share that?
Sorry?
Are you able to share that proposal with this committee?
Absolutely, unless there's any objections or things I don't know about, then yes, I have it.
What temperature will the, does it say in the paperwork, what temperature that the?
It'll be heated to 32 degrees. And it's a significant saving on gas for us.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Conzaman?
I'm sorry, about access, did you say there'd be a ramp or not?
There will be a ramp, yes.
Okay, thank you. Because that's the joy of Laikart.
Yeah.
So it'll be similar to the indoor heated pool at the Gudna?
No, not so much. I mean, it's a 12 metre by seven metre pool. And the best example I can give you is the Halcyon Retirement Village at Pimperma.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be enclosed in a colour bond shed with roller doors to let the light and air through. But at night, the roller doors will be closed, so we retain a lot of the heat. Should save about 75% of the costs for heating because it's enclosed, and it's a smaller body of water to heat.
And just picking up on the current infrastructure capacity at the pool, noting that this is, you know, a really amazing opportunity for our community to have a new indoor pool, it's not going to be ready for this winter, so?
Well, if we went through the pool heating process, we'd probably have to go through a standard procurement process anyway, and so it would be potentially three to four months before we'd get the heaters involved.
So the current, the current infrastructure cannot heat the pool any warmer than it currently?
It's running at full capacity.
Running at full capacity, okay.
Sorry, is that affecting the life of that asset?
Yes, it is. So the problem has been that the previous heaters were designed to be, have a working lifespan of about 10 years, but we've replaced them after five years because we've been running them at absolutely full bore. And the replacement heaters that we, we thought would have the same capacity and the same performance didn't quite heat the pool to 32 degrees. So we have to double that, and that's where the doubling costs and doubling running costs.
Thanks, Mr. Hilliard.
Any further questions?
Okay, so, did I move that? Yeah, I sure did. Seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion around that, noting that the pool construction? Yeah, I'm pretty excited that the proposal came back and that they'll start this month. I wasn't expecting them to be able to deliver that infrastructure so quickly, which is, which is great, but it still, it doesn't solve the problem of this winter for our pool users. So we'll just, we'll have to ensure that the community, the broader community is aware of the future plans for the pool, and we'll be able to message that out to any pool users. And if it's convenient, pool users, you know, potentially may have to use other facilities in the meantime.
Through you, Chair, do they realise like the limitation on the assets at the time, at this time not being able to heat that extra three degrees and then?
Residents aren't thinking about capability of infrastructure. So in our anecdotal experiences, it's just been customers coming to the pool, residents coming to the pool, it's colder than it was last year, and that's not amenable to them. So that's, that's really what it is, and we've done our best to highlight those infrastructure issues to the community, but the constant feedback is, that's great, make it warmer for us.
I'm happy like with this, this revelation, because obviously, Mr. Hilliard, it was explaining that procurement for extra heaters will take time.
Anyway.
As well, so that could be a really good community in this story.
Yeah, we'll have to ensure that we get the message out loud and proud as soon as we're able to. I guess it's in the public domain now. Mayor?
If I may, Chair, in reference to the question from councillor Johnick, I think if you go through the history of this, as it's been raised by yourself and councillor Doyle, council did, I think, a couple of years ago, upgrade the heaters and it had a reduced capacity. There was a decision to stick to that 28, 29 degrees. So previously, it was able to heat up to that 32 degrees, but there was a decision made previously. So we're trying to, I guess, make up for that.
Yep. Okay. With no further discussion, we'll take that one to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. With no notices of motion that I'm aware of, all matters arising. We'll end the meeting this morning at 10:36 AM, and we'll be back for our next meeting in 10 minutes. I beg your pardon?